Fifty-year law and I hit the strike. So, um, get your office. Like, no, really, you're doing that type of thing. I'm like, oh, I would say. Like, just destroy it.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yeah. 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 It's very quiet.
What was?
Yeah. We'll stop talking.
Going off all week or just today?
Um, I think tomorrow also. She looks skinny. She says she doesn't want to see me. I wish I could do this sooner. I wish I did it today and I didn't. Are we all home happy? Um, I'm going to do it. And then so. She not talking. So, this is. Oh. No, because we have. Yeah.
I'm returning my envelope. Keys is reusable.
Oh, excellent. Yes, it is. Thank you.
I had to pry it open some.
Okay. I see that.
Lauren's going crazy. She's gonna start using packing paper, duct tape, I think.
Lauren or sorry?
You don't have enough. It's well-secured.
So, what's up?
There's another one more.
Oh, I can take them if you want.
Did I say Lauren? He said Lauren. Wow.
I know.
Lauren used to leave them behind the PD window, so we didn't have to have them taped. But that was on there. There was a dispatcher there, too.
Hey, Steve.
Candy, have you heard from Linda? She's gonna be here, right?
As far as I know, she is.
I got.
Now, I'm getting a little worried something happened.
(laughing).
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Huh? As far as I know. That's why something happened here and there.
(inaudible). 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 Yeah. I'm returning my envelope. Keys is reusable.
Oh, excellent. Yes, it is. Thank you.
I had to pry it open some.
Okay. I see that.
Lauren's going crazy. She's gonna start using packing paper, duct tape, I think.
Lauren or sorry?
You don't have enough. It's well-secured.
So, what's up?
There's another one more.
Oh, I can take them if you want.
Did I say Lauren? He said Lauren. Wow.
I know. I think that, too.
Lauren used to leave them behind the PD window, so we didn't have to have them taped. But that was on there. There was a dispatcher there, too.
Hey, Steve.
Candy, have you heard from Linda? She's gonna be here, right?
As far as I know, she is.
I got.
Now, I'm getting a little worried something happened.
(laughing).
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Hey, Steve. Candy, have you heard from Linda? She's gonna be here, right?
As far as I know, she is.
I got.
Now, I'm getting a little worried something happened.
(laughing).
(inaudible). 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 Oh, yeah. Those are good times, man. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. (inaudible). Yeah. Oh, she was so pretty. I was so impressed. She had these stuff. (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Candy, did you wanna mention anything about Taqua? I don't know. Or just wait, see if anybody comments on it?
Because whatever you'd like me to do, I mean, I could do a whole report or I could.
I saw it was going crazy on Facebook a couple of weeks ago.
Right. Yeah, we're not. Right now, we don't have a permit. A lot of other lakes don't either, because the state's been swamped by it. But Connecticut Federation of Lakes and another one just came out with the support and use of it. But because we don't have a permit yet.
Is it relevant for us?
Well, if we're not doing it right now, I mean, as time goes on, we're probably not going to do it. I had divers take out the milfoil in Sucker Brook, because you don't need permits for that. So, it's just a matter of whether we would start to take out nuisance plants or if we were to find hydrola in the next survey, you know, like at the boat launch or something, then we may, but we may use Prusolicor instead of a Taqua. Not sure that's what issues are with that. Supposedly started.
Good evening. Today is Monday, July 21st, 2025. It's 7:00 PM. It's called the regular meeting for the Board of Selectmen to order.
Linda Grappa.
Troy Lemire.
Paul Marino.
Todd Archilashi.
Lauren Dombrowski.
William Hester.
Candy Perez.
William Pozo.
And Town Manager Harrington will not be here tonight, obviously, as you don't see a spot. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, agenda review. Does anyone have anything to add? Seeing nothing. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes of our regular Board of Selectmen's meeting on July 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing no corrections or adjustments. All in favor? opposed, upstanding? 601. Minutes are approved. Moving on to item number five, citizens' comments. The Board of Selectmen welcomes public comments. Speakers be limited to three minutes or less and may speak once this round. Please give your name and just turn on the microphone up there.
Okay. Okay. That's all? Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Ann Marino, 631 Vera Road. As you all know, I have an application in for one of the open seats on Wetlands. And I will say, you guys sure do make a girl work hard to volunteer. What I realize that I haven't shared with you is why I care so much. I'm gonna tell a little story. My grandmother was born in 1921 to immigrant parents. Her name was Maria Verachoni. When she was 20, she married my grandfather, Jack Herman. They were both kids of the Depression.
Just one second. Somebody's telling us there's no audio, just music.
Mics are on, so it's gotta be a setting?
My story cut. Cut short.
We've paused your time. (laughing). Let me bring it up.
She's asking my husband if he could hear it.
Check, check. Check, check, check. There, sound.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're hearing it.
Yeah, we're hearing it.
Yeah, we're hearing it.
Okay. So, anyway.
Continue.
So, my, my story is this. In 1921, my grandmother, Maria Verachoni, was born to immigrants from Italy. She struggled for the Depression and when she was 20 years old, married my grandfather, Jack Herman. He had an eighth-grade education, she had a sixth-grade education, and the two of them managed to build a small family business together. And in 1970, they were able to afford to buy a cottage on Highland Lake. That cottage transformed my life. The summers here in Winstead made me a kid who was strong, capable, and fearless. Because I was free. I was free to run, swim, play, not just in the lake, in the brooks, in the streams, in the forests. And I really feel like this place made me. So, it is really important to me to return the favor and to take care of it. So, now, just, I wanna address the statements that Mayor Archilowski and Selectman Marino made in the last meeting. Select Marino claimed that our lake makes dual wetlands ZBA service hugely problematic, those are his words, due to application crossovers. He stated that there's a 90% to 95% crossover. I'm gonna give you guys these papers. I reviewed all available wetlands and ZBA meeting minutes and agendas posted on the town's website from mid-2018, when Selectman Marino joined ZBA, until the last meeting. So, this is what I found. There were 255 total wetlands applications. 101 of them were dock and mooring-related applications. That leaves 154 land-use-based applications, and only nine of them appeared before ZBA. Seven of them appeared before dock and mooring, but 19 land-use applications appeared before ZBA unless there are meeting minutes that were missing, but from every, I checked and double-checked. So, that's 4.9% of all ZBA and wetlands applications from mid-2018 until the last meeting. So, then, I called Mike Demato, founder of Taiki, Winstead's fractional town planning consulting firm, and he confirmed that several municipalities in Connecticut have or have had residents who have served both on wetlands and ZBA or wetlands in PNZ. And he said, "You can't do PNZ and ZBA, as we all know, but there's no issue with ZBA and wetlands." He said it's allowed. Nearby, in Morris, Vice Chair of Zoning Giles Givannazzi, for many years, served duly on ZBA and wetlands. In Litchfield, Wetlands Commissioner Connie Troll duly served as the chairman of the Zoning Ordinance Committee. Both towns have waterfront properties on Bantam Lake. I have spoken with land-use offices and town clerks in East Tatum, Middlefield, New Hartford, Branford, Guilford, Ellington, Griswold, Salisbury, Chester, Coventry, Hebron, and Salem, which is as much as I could get through in the time I had. They have all confirmed that their town charters do not prohibit dual service, and the general consensus was that they would support a volunteer who wanted to do both. Candlewood Lake, Cedar Lake, Coventry Lake, Ashland Pond, the lake in Lakeville, Lake Wanaskapomic, Coventry Lake, Gay City Pond, West Hill Lake, and Gardner Lake are all in these towns. So, there's that. I do appreciate Selectman Lemire's comment that should there be a conflict, if I am on both boards, I should recuse myself. 100%. I agree with you and I will. And if you look at my record as a seated commissioner on wetlands and currently on ZBA, I have a record of accusing myself when there's been a conflict. So, I'm just gonna wrap up. The majority of you have publicly stated that I'm qualified to serve on wetlands. The law, as stated by Kevin Nelligan and our charter and the state constitution, permits dual service. You also have a record of approving dual service. I stated that in the last meeting. And I'm committing to recusal when appropriate. As I said, the past seven years of wetlands and ZBA meeting minutes and agendas show only 19 out of 388 land-related projects came before both boards. So, I respectfully request that you vote to approve my appointment, uphold equal treatment of all qualified volunteers under the law, and give me the opportunity to help this place that I love so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anyone?
I'd like just to speak in favor of Mary Ann a little bit.
Sure. You have three minutes?
Three minutes. Okay.
Much as you'd like.
Well, you know, we all know that she's, she's been done the job before. She's good at the job. The town needs the job done, so putting her in the job is, supports the town's best interest because it's there. The question of the conflict of interest has come up, that the town attorney has made it clear, that's not a reason, that doesn't exist, there is no conflict of meaning. Here's, he's our legal authority telling us that. So, that, you know, that doesn't exist in my mind as a reason. My nephew, Paul, his brother, sister, you know, all you guys, I know a lot of you. Paul, we grew up together, you know, Troy, what do we do? We, I haven't gone plowing yet, but we're going to. We know each other. Todd, she's good at the job, she wants the job, she should have the job. We can't offer her a paradoxical offer. Quit this to get this, you know? It's something, an offer paradox is something you offer someone, you offer them an offer that you know they're not gonna accept because it abandons their basic principles. So, you know, that's not really, I don't see that. I know, Paul, I think you've gone out of your way to be, to not have a conflict of interest because she's your sister. You know, I think if you've done that and, you know, there's, there's reasons to do that, and that's, you know, worthy of some pride, but I would say to everybody here tonight, she knows how to do the job, she wants the job, she's good for the town. Be proud of your decision. That's it, gentlemen, ladies.
Cheryl, did you want to talk?
Joan McGlinn, 61 Wetmore. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Mary Ann to make sure that she gets the position. We need volunteers that are so enthusiastic. It's wonderful. You know she's gonna show up, you know she's gonna do the work, you know this is the best decision for the town. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak?
Stephen Plumley, 152 Grantville Road, also here to support Mary Ann. All the points I was gonna make have been made, so I'll just say, as we know, Attorney Nelligan hasn't, has not come back and prohibited it. She is committed to recusing. The other members of the Wetman's Board have written letters of support. Yeah, one thing I would say is there's, there are no perfect candidates, but Mary Ann is, we all know, exceptionally knowledgeable, dedicated, qualified, loves the town as she just described, so I think that, as some others have said, the town should encourage applicants like that rather than push them away or reject them. So, appreciate the support for her. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Beverly Paganelli. I live at 856 West Wakefield Boulevard. I've known Mary Ann for like five years. We moved up here permanently in 2020. We owned homes previously from 2009. As you see, I mean, it was evidenced tonight of her thoroughness and how she's dedicated and all the information she had gathered on her behalf to represent herself in this manner. I want someone like that to protect my property on the lake, to rule in behalf of the town. She loves not only the lake, but you can see that she has, is community-minded as well. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't just be jumping at her. The conflict can be resolved with her recusing herself. I sat for 25 years on, as a director at, on a bank board, and when loans came up and I had a conflict, we just, we recused ourselves and there was never any issue. I have, on the other hand, seen, you know, the political side of this, and I hope that's not the problem here. But I would, I would be very happy to have Mary Ann be on the board and on both boards. I think, I think she's passionate and dedicated and, and if she doesn't know the answer, it's obvious that she would look for the answer and do whatever she needed to make it happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up.
Hello. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm Gary Goulet. I'm here representing my parents who live at 120 Sucker Brook Road. My mother's sick right now. She couldn't make it. I think it'd be crazy not to give her the job. She's tenacious, obviously. You can see what she did just to represent herself as it was brought up. I'm actually worried to be sitting on the other side of her someday, because if you all know me, I do stonework around the lake. So, eventually, we're gonna butt heads, but I think she would be a worthwhile addition to the town. And if conflict is one of the things that you see, I don't know all the laws, I don't know the bylaws, I'm simple, but I believe accusing herself, Pete Marchand did it for me when I came for a wetlands, so if that's what it needs, if you're getting the right person for the job, I think it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? There'll be another public comment towards the end of the meeting if something else comes up. John, did you wanna talk or?
Me?
Yeah. Nope? Okay.
No, I'm just here to.
Okay, moving on. Moving on to item number six, the Town Manager's Report. We have a brief report today. He's away with some other commitments. So, last week, last weekend, he was at the Highland Lake Annual Meeting. He had the pleasure of attending the annual meeting, which was very well-attended. There were many familiar faces that he saw after two years, and he started to actually feel like he knew everyone by name, or at least that's what they thought. The Q and A session lived up to its reputation. No stone was left unturned, and he left with a notebook full of good ideas. He was happy to share that the town will soon be a regular contributor to Highland Lake Newsletter. It's another way for us to keep everyone in the loop and share the good things happening or to clear up any confusion around town. We did have an incident downstairs in the Police Department between July 7th and the 21st. It was not the good kind of excitement down there. They had a minor plumbing issue that turned into a not-so-miner flood. The good news is that all tests came back negative, so the cost to repair will be substantially less than what we were originally concerned with. If you notice, there was a large trailer parked in front of Town Hall for about a week, a couple of weeks. That was the first company that we hired to do the cleanup and the repair work. Since then, we've switched to another contractor who can handle the entire job from start to finish. He's worked with them before in Windsor Locks, and with a little luck, everything, everything's down there should be back to normal soon. Also, the police car that was funded in the 25-26 capital budget has arrived. We're happy to report that we have a brand-new Explorer that was left over at the MHQ that was ordered, and the original buyer never picked it up. We were able to save roughly $20,000 on this cruiser. It's all decked out, and it will be receiving its decals on August 1st. The Sioux Grossman Trail, that's been, the committee's been working tirelessly to get this across the finish line. They're deep in conversations now with local landowners about the easements, and from what Town Manager Harrington's hearing, the real excitement is building around the project. It's clear this trail is about much more than just a path through the woods. It could be an economic catalyst that we've been waiting for for many years. The real potential here is for something big, maybe even the most significant boost to our town that's had, we've had in a long time. He attended the youth cervix camp graduation that was at the Thor Museum. It was a four-week program for kids aged 12 to 15, all centered around the following question, "What does it mean to be an American?" These young adults spent their summer interviewing and having real conversations with many of our local leaders. At the end of the camp, they put together a newsletter highlighting everything that they learned, and it's a generally impressive work. You can find the QR code for the newsletter posted around Town Hall and at businesses throughout the town. He had the chance to meet these remarkable kids, and he was generally impressed by how proud this group was of their work. And lastly, we've heard about the Main Street Trees down the east end by the park. We had what could have been considered a classic Main Street drama when he was alerted via social media that CT DOT was removing trees downtown. There was no stopping state on this, this project. They deemed that the trees were a safety hazard, and they acted fast. We found out about it the afternoon before they were cut down. fast. We found out about it the afternoon before they were cut down. The state has agreed to expedite the permitting process so we can replant trees. We've reached out to Eversource, which has a program that helps fund new trees. With a bit of luck and some of the financial support of Eversource, we should see new trees lining Main Street by early fall. And that's all he's provided for his report this week. Any comments on Town Manager's Report? Moving on to item seven, correspondence. Does anyone have anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
In our packets, there are two letters that correspond to some of the things that have been happening recently. One is from a Connie Keith about supporting Mary Ann Marino for the Wetlands Commission.
Okay.
And the other one is from Ellie Gunn. She's a board member of ZBA. She's referring in her letter to the proposal to remove a ZBA board member and she's talking as a sitting member and her thoughts on this and she's wondering why the action to take Mr. Pollack was done without a conversation with him prior to your discussion at the last meeting, nor the chair. So she has some comments on that. And I think that...
Both of those letters have been entered into the record.
Oh my God. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? Moving on to item number eight, Boards and Commissions. Nope, is not yet.
So LCD received several calls about music playing and they couldn't hear the, the meeting. However, Joy even went back on her YouTube right from the very beginning and we watched it. We went to the time to call complained in and there's no music on her recording even.
Okay.
But people were actually calling Litchfield County Dispatch, the Police Department to complain that there was music over our...
Hopefully they were calling the non-emergency number for this, but...
I guess we're famous.
Everything that we've seen seems to be working properly, but if you're having technical difficulties, we apologize. Boards and Commissions.
Okay, sorry about the interruption.
Before you start on the Boards and Commissions, I'm just curious, there were two other applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate positions. They came in an email to us, I guess as a reminder that we have them there and they're not listed anywhere here. Were they left off because?
Well, because if this seat was filled for the nomination that's on there, there is no positions open.
Well, why don't you list them anyway in order and then just take the first one that came through? Like was this one the first one?
This was, according to the dates, this was the next one that was...
But why don't you just list them so that they would be there for the next meetings?
I guess I could have had them list them. But they will remain on file. They're just not up for...
Right, but this becomes...
Consideration.
This becomes like part of a packet that we could all, or whoever's here in the future can look back and see it.
As, as a record, you're saying?
Yes, as a record of nominations.
All right, well, going forward, I will list all the applicants, even if there's gonna be...
Unless they, unless they withdraw it, because otherwise it's kept on file somewhere, but where?
Yeah, we should have access to that list.
Right, so it, it could, this serves as a record because it's in the packet that goes on the website.
All right. I'll add that in the future. I believe all the applications, whether we accept them or not, are, are kept in the Town Clerk's office. One has those in a folder, I believe.
One other thing that would be helpful. Who prepares the packets for the Boards and Commissions, this packet that we get?
Go ahead, Beth.
I know it's more work for the person who prepares it, but there's an application here that was submitted in November twenty-four that I, I don't have and now he's up for a position. I think it would be important to have, especially when we're going to appoint them, to have these applications in our packet.
Okay. You mean for all, for all three steps?
For all people that, yeah. I, I think we've had them in the past. Something that goes back to October twenty, uh, of twenty-four. I, I couldn't find, I know we received it, but I don't have it. I, I think it would be helpful and a little more work, but...
We can get it done.
Thank you.
I will, I will ask to have those added. As you know, this is my second week actually doing this, so...
You did a great job and so much...
If you got, if you got suggestions, I'm more than, more than open to them.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Hold on, let me just put your book over.
All right. We good? Take it away. All right. We have one resignation tonight. John Pollack, zoning boards of appeals, as of seven fifteen twenty twenty-five.
And the other one?
Uh, he rescinded, Hamish rescinded his resignation.
Oh, he did?
Mm-hmm. So it is just the one. As of tonight, we have nobody up for consideration. We have three nominations slash appointments. First, Matt Smith, application ten-nine twenty twenty-four for Planning and Zoning Commission, party Republican, seat type alternate, term end date ten of twenty thirty.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Bill. Okay, okay. We have a motion. A second. Discussion. No discussion. All in favor? Opposed?
I'm going to refuse my...
Abstaining. So it is five-one-one.
Just one thing on that, just because I know there's been other work done by this applicant for another, for, for people that are, just as there's an expectation of recusals for the other person that they're just being reminded that there are recusal times that are gonna be needed.
Noted. Next.
Next. We have Jamie Cooligan up for Water and Sewer Commission, party unaffiliated. Seat is full member. Term date to end six of twenty twenty-eight.
Do we have a mo- do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Six oh one. Next.
Next, we have Mary Ann Marino, Inland Wetlands Commission, party Democrat, seat type full member, term end date four of twenty twenty-eight.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that Mary Ann Marino gets the spot on Inland Wetlands.
A second. Thank you, Troy. Thank you, Bill. Discussion.
I'd like a little discussion. I would like to say, Mary Ann, if you put half as much effort into being a member of Inland Wetlands that you did to become an applicant, we're gonna go far. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? So I did have some concerns about one resident serving on two of our top-tier boards. And the reason why is because we are about two years from when our former finance director was finally released from prison after ten years, because that was a gentleman who had too much power. And one person having too much power in this town makes me nervous. With that, I will be voting in support of your appointment, but just keep in mind that there are a lot of people that are hesitant about government and their views of government. So just keep that in mind.
Excellent. And something I'd just like to add, there have been other people appointed to multiple boards in this term.
There have been, and I think that this board needs to identify the top-tier boards that we feel would be important not to have overlap at a future meeting and consider an ordinance to move forward with something like that in the future. It definitely needs to be at least talked about.
I'd just like to add one more thing. It's a shame that we have to have people on several boards. There's a lot of people in this town and I would like to see people come out and volunteer and help us out, but unfortunately, we don't get that. So we're stuck with the people that do most of the work and join several, you know, commissions, as I did before I was a selectman and, and a couple other people on this board. So, you know, helping the town out with, with joining a commission is a great thing. You gotta try it. If you don't like it, then it's not your thing, but you gotta at least try it, so.
So Troy, you weren't here the night that you, that a person that did just what you just said was voted down and who added a degree in environmental policy and was voted not to join Wetlands. So, and with your sentiment, we've done that for as long as we can, so I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Great. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Six oh one.
Congratulations.
And John.
I'm for a prison.
John, thank you for your service on ZBA.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank John Pollack for his service on Zoning Board of Appeals. And as always and every week, there's multiple positions open on multiple boards and commissions. So as Troy said, we could use volunteers.
And those are listed on the council website.
Should we address the letter?
No. Moving on to item number nine, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business at this point. Item ten, new business. A, discussion on the applications for land use fees. Planner, Jeffrey. You alone? Nobody from Tai Chi here?
No, I'm flying solo tonight.
All right.
It's part of the discussion. So you should have received in your packets a couple of memos from Jeremy DeCarli, our consultant regarding fees for both Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands. We could take them separate together, however you like to do that. What I'm passing out now are just a few examples of costs to the department for projects that need to be advertised in the newspaper. As you're all aware, the Republican American was bought out somewhat recently by Hearst Media and their prices all went up. So in an effort to keep the department whole and not float individual applicants through taxpayers at large, we wanted to just propose a slightly enhanced fee schedule, which would handle those issues. So those new proposed fees are in the memo and if you have any specific questions, we can, we can take those.
I guess if you could just talk a little bit more about why you're trying to increase the fees in relationship to what we bring in versus what we have to pay going out?
Sure. Right now, we are upside down on most Planning and Zoning Commission fees. If you look at some of the examples there, you'll see what it costs us to do the required advertisements. For instance, a site plan, right now, we collect a total of a hundred and seventy-five dollars and that leaves us thirty-five dollars in the hole. Special permit, we collect two fifty. That leaves us two hundred and ten dollars in the hole. An excavation renewal, which is required to have a public hearing by the regulation, we collect one hundred dollars and we are three hundred and sixty dollars in the hole. So tho- those are the, the reasons why we're proposing to increase the fees. Wetlands is a little more difficult. We actually have in chapter three ninety, which is the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Regulations, three ninety dash nineteen is our application fee schedule. This schedule has never been used since I've been employed in the town. We collect a, a flat fee for Wetlands of two hundred and thirty dollars. We are not upside down on that automatically, yet if a public hearing is called for, which is at the discretion of the Wetlands Commission, we would be. So you'll see in the Wetlands proposed fee schedule, we are asking for a standalone fee for a public hearing, so we would only collect that if and when a public hearing were necessary. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah. Remember when we came with the building permit fees?
Sure.
Remember we asked for a whole delineation of what it was now and what it would be in the future? So I have what would be in the future, but is there, did I miss it, what it is now?
I have my own little notes here. I could make copies for this, or if you like, we can prepare a more in-depth look at this for the next meeting, if you'd like to table and continue the discussion.
And this would, just for the record, this would not be the first meeting of the three?
Right, this is just discussion.
This would be the discussion period, so this is not meeting number one.
Correct.
And we're not trying to make a profit on this either. We're just trying to break even and we want to make that clear.
Exactly.
This isn't to make money. This is so we don't lose money.
It would be also helpful to show what they do in other towns when you, if you can bring it in with what we charge now with the proposal is and like what it is around the neighborhood, because I think it just makes it clearer for people that, not necessarily us, because we're hearing all the information, but in case somebody else wanted to ask, you know, why and what's happening, that we have it.
That was the exact process we did for permitting.
Yeah, I think Shane had a spreadsheet for that.
Yeah, and then just keep in mind, the building permits are a little different. It's based on cost of work and so on and so forth, but we, we could definitely put it together.
These might actually be easier, Jeff, because they are flat fees.
Exactly.
Right.
We do not take into account staff review time or anything else in the fees. This is just what it costs us to put it through the paper and, and all that.
Hopefully the state gets smart and lets it go onto the town website and not into the paper. That has been discussed. I'm not sure where that's going.
Well, it hasn't gone anywhere in the ten-plus years that I go along.
What it needs to, because...
Well, no, I mean, we, we took our own into the website. That's why we have legal, you know, underneath ours. We were able to take our own, but we weren't able to take the stat- state statute board because of newspapers that really don't exist anymore and keep requesting for that. So it didn't pass through this legislative session either.
It did not. We were, it's funny, because we were just talking about where I work and Northwork. That same scenario came up today about the fees in the paper, how they went up and we're losing money.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be doing the same thing.
Yeah, they've been talking about trying to change that legislation for a while. The newspaper lobby still has enough teeth, I guess.
We don't want, we don't want taxpayers paying for individual projects.
And that's the whole idea behind this, but we will present further information for you at the next meeting.
Yeah, Jeff, when you do the, as Candy called it, the, what's going on around the neighborhood, we do the comparison. You and I have been through this game before, so let's, let's not do Hartford, Fairfield.
No, no.
Let, let's do, you know what I'm saying? Because we've been through this game before. We're like, well, this is what Hartford charges and Fairfield charges and Greenwich charges and again, we're Winchester, so we'll keep it.
Yeah, we'll look for local and/or similar.
Right.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on that, or shall we move on to the next?
I think we're good for both of them, right?
Yeah. I think we're good for both the fees. Yes, I'm also here for...
Oh, you got something else?
I do. Next thing, I'm you.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
Okay. So I was here some months ago with this item as well. This is proposed changes to the dock and mooring ordinance. These proposals come from the Wetlands Commission. As a reminder, it's an ordinance, so it is under the board's purview for any changes, whether to accept some of the proposals or bring about your own proposals for the ordinance. You got in your packet a memo which provides, it's usually red line, but this is orange line for whatever reason. So you'll see throughout the ordinance is printed, anywhere where orange text appears by itself, that's simply in addition to the regulator, to the ordinance, excuse me. If you find orange type next to any stricken language, that is a change. So the most substantial change here, if you flip to page seven of the memo, comes down to three eighty dash thirteen, which was previously, or still is, boat lifts and walkways. The proposal is to change boats to the word vessel throughout this section, so you'll see that change. And the substantial change to this is previously, you were allowed one boat lift and one jet ski lift. The commission felt that if your property otherwise complied with all the regulations such as shorefront coverage, so on and so forth, that you might be able to have two vessel lifts regardless of the kind, boat or jet ski. Like I said, that's the most substantial change. Also, last time I was here, the question of whether or not this proposal was put before Attorney Nelligan. It now has been. All the language is fine with him if approved by you. So that is the dock and mooring ordinance proposed changes.
Jeff, I, I didn't see anything in here for the property. I wanted to ask for an exemption for that docking and mooring.
So the ordinance does not allow for variances or exceptions in any fashion. The only change to the regulation here that could be allowed is to be closer than the required ten-foot littoral boundary. Anytime someone comes in with an application like that, it automatically goes to public hearing, so their neighbors are notified, so on and so forth. But as far as any other relaxation or changes to any of the measurements or rules in this ordinance, nothing like that was put forth by Wetlands. But again, I remind you, this is a Board of Selectmen-driven legislation. So if there are any other ordinance changes that you So if there are any other ordinance changes that you guys would like to consider, you know, now would be the time that the doors open.
Yeah, I think maybe we need something like that in there just in case, you know.
I'd just like to pass some things out to you. One will be from Shirley Als House. She's a woman that for many years worked with the town. I mean, worked with ordinances on dock and mooring throughout, I don't know, probably, probably almost my whole life. No, not that long, but worked for at least the last couple of iterations. So there's a memo from her about it, because I shared it with her to get her insights. And then there's some comments by me that I'm going to discuss with you now. And here you go, Jeff.
There you go.
There's one for you. So I'll go through Shirley's first. And Shirley's, she talks about in, Jeff just said there would be a public hearing for the 10-foot, 10-foot littoral boundary. What that is, is you all know, it's like from your property line, 10 feet in. So in what we have in orange underline, however, is it doesn't say "will be." It says, "May a public hearing be deemed necessary," right? So she's talking about in there that getting a waiver for 10-foot littoral buffer, the language is too squishy for law and leaves them open to appeal. Either not require any public hearing at all, or require in each case, but do not, she suggests not using the language "may be necessary." If a waiver is denied and a public hearing was not held, the applicant can bring administrative appeal to Superior Court and argue that the commission had optioned to hold public hearings, but did not, and therefore kept out evidence. All these suggestions are to make it stronger, what they're looking to, what they were supporting, what they brought forward, but making it better. If a waiver was granted over the objections of a budding waterfront neighbor, and that neighbor could demonstrate harm, the neighbor could be considered a grieve person and also outstanding to bring administrative appeal. The subsequent language in the ordinance that spells out criteria to be considered before a waiver would be granted appear to include information that could be gleaned from public hearing might be missing if one were not held. Either way, make a decision on whether to hold public hearings or not, and take out the language that gives discretion. Reallowing a slide to be attached to a swim float, which would be another area in there that was identified. Swim floats are 380-10 on page six. There, when they attach a slide, especially to the round circle trampolines, the slides usually extend out there. So she's saying to put language in there to take into account the slide doesn't go over. And then in terms of definitions of vessel and a separate mention of personal watercraft, the new definition of vessel includes all watercraft. So the language in the definition of personal watercraft lift and float should read "a device specifically designed to lift and hold a vessel known as a personal watercraft jet ski." So that's from her. Now from me, I'm the stapled one. Up at the top of it, I list the four things that staff put on top of their requests to us. So number two, concerns with, I have, or concerns I've seen over the years, or whatever my experience. I was inland wetlands chair back in the late 90s, so I've been around this for a while. I believe that the littoral boundary needs to be tightened up, and I agree with Shirley, and it may be deemed necessary to, a public hearing is necessary for deliberation of a 10-foot waiver. And I'm going to tell you why this 10-foot waiver really needs to be looked at and really contemplated very hard. Because imagine, and it could happen to those of us that live on the lake now, that you get a new neighbor, and the new neighbor wants boat lifts, because you're going to make two of them now, the trampoline and other things, and the waterfront frontage is small. Not everyone has large amounts of property. Some people have just 25-foot strips on the water. Some people have, are lucky to have maybe 150 feet on the water, but most people have small amounts of frontage. In today's world with everything online, when you buy a new piece of property, the rules are already there. So going in to get a variance, or whatever, as Bill was just talking about too, that is, you know, well, I'll just go through the rest of them. So I would say that the, that there should be public hearings, and that if a neighbor, why are, if somebody moves next to me, why do I have to say no to overcoming the 10-foot? Why do I have to say, oh yeah, you can come closer to me, or no, I don't want you to come closer than 10 feet? So why is it that existing people have to be the bad guy on the 10-foot littoral boundary? Property values, we all know that property values serve this town very well in terms of the revenue that we get. Even though somebody might not be a direct neighbor of mine or someone else's, the more the cove fills up, it becomes less desirable and may reduce neighbors' values. So the more we put out there, and this applies to the number of uplifts and stuff, the more you put out there, and you may be friends with somebody for a long time, and you say, yeah, that's okay. But what about subsequent owners? What happens after that? Does a new person come in, and they buy the house next door, and they go like, why is this person on my property line? So that's a consideration for that. And it affects the sections of docks on 380-10, page five, and swim floats, page six. Something that wasn't addressed, and I did bring up the last time this came before us, is on page six, 380-10, it's important that you all like feast your eyes on it, so it's not just me telling you this. But it seems like a contradiction to me, and I don't know why, why it is a contradiction. Or maybe it's not a contradiction, I'm just interpreting it wrong. But it says, "No part of the swim float shall be located more than 50 feet from the shorefront." And then in C, it says, "No part of any swim float shall extend beyond the maximum dock length." Well, dock is 40 feet. So is it 40 or 50? So I think that can easily be fixed with that. And then again, one of the things that, the reason I know this now is because a neighbor put in a trampoline, and we've had lovely wind this spring, and the wind has dragged the trampoline down across the boundaries. So when there's wind, the wind takes the excess anchor line and is able to blow across, and it's not across my properties, it's against somebody else's. And that's probably happening everywhere. So I think the anchoring and the wind pushing these things, you might want to look at language for that as well. And number, concerning number four on the list is the vessel lifts on page seven. So if you're going to put in two watercraft lifts, which a lot of people already have, by the way, if you put in two double jet ski lifts, right? Because right now, most people just have a boat, and then maybe one jet ski lift, or a double jet ski lift. So because you say two lifts, and you're not qualifying it as to what it should be, does that mean people can put in two double jet ski lifts and be able to have four vessels there? Who's going to enforce the, no, the three vessels per property? Would it be enforced, or would somebody be able to rent a space on a fourth jet ski? Right? Because if you, you might put in a double jet ski and a single jet ski, and then you're within the three vessels. If you put in double, two double jet skis, can you put in four, or who would enforce it? Right? And so, so there goes that. And then just a couple of things that happened through there is F is the width of the vessel and the walkway. Within, through this, it talks about aggregate of allowable shorefront coverage. Who's measuring? Does it, does it matter? Again, it's the coves and direct neighbors. Swim floats, because it was brought up, measuring the aggregate. Mooring buoys, who's measuring the aggregate pursuant to regulations of the state of Connecticut for markers? But IWWC just allowed one, so I'm not sure where that language, where the waiver is on that. So those are the things that I saw that should, I think should be considered. I think you could do the things that you've brought forward, but I do think that there's an effect on neighbors to just simply say, okay, we have two boat lifts, okay, we have, you know, the 10-foot littoral boundary that could be waived, because I think it does have impacts in the general neighborhood and property values and enjoyment and all that. And as well as people that drive around for enjoyment, all of a sudden, now you're looking at a lot of lifts with a lot of canopies. And so I just bring those up as things to think about as we move forward.
Thank you, Candy. Bless the real.
So enforcement's always the issue, right, Jeff?
Yes, it is.
As it stands right now, the current regulations, ordinance, I should say, the way they sit, we have things that need to be enforced, and we don't know how to do that. So the question becomes, and to Selectman Perez's point, you know, if you have, if somebody puts in two vessel lifts that have, that hold four vessels, who's enforcing them no more than three vessels?
That would be me.
Right? And how's that, and how's that enforcement going to happen? And I think they're in lies part of the problem. To Bill's point about having relief, I don't think we should have any ordinance in town that doesn't offer a resident or a property owner the opportunity to come before a board or go to the LTA, or whatever the case may be, because there should be nothing that has, that everything's got to have a mechanism for relief. The way ZBA gives relief, the way Wetlands gives relief. When these were written, relief wasn't part of it, and it really should be. So I think we definitely need to look at that. You know, I had a question about markers. There seems to be a trend going on right now that people are dropping in, not mooring buoys, but they're dropping in what look like mooring buoys out in front of their properties to direct the traffic further away from their properties. I don't know how many have been permitted or applied for, and, you know, again, we're back to enforcement. How do we look at that? You know, do we have an overall map that shows what moorings are illegal and what markers are legal? Who decides whether if there's a big rock by my house that, that's currently not marked? I mean, we all know it's there, but if you're new to the lake or you're visiting for the day, and it breaks water, so you're going to hit it, and it's going to do damage, that one's not marked. So how do we deal with markers and permitting, and who does all that stuff? If there's a rock that's a hazard, is that a town permit? The town applies for it, does it? Or is it the person who lives closest? I mean, how do we even deal with all that?
So Candy, correct me if I'm wrong, markers are actually driven by the state, whereas mooring balls are part of a local application. So the Wetlands Commission does handle the mooring ball portion of things. That being said, more and more, we'll just call them buoys, have been appearing on the lake. This was a discussion point at the last Wetlands meeting. It was the first time it was on the agenda. So we're beginning to talk about how we might try to combat that. I even offered the heavy-handed approach of going out on the boat with the assistance of the police marine patrol and collecting these balls. If people then want to come claim them, we can talk about their permit.
Right.
That wasn't too well received, and it was a bit tongue-in-cheek. But, you know, when you talk about enforcement and ability and time that goes with it, you know, it's all about trying to find that balancing act. But again, I'll remind you, with all the good points that Selectman Perez brought up and everything else that's going on here, these are your rules. So when we're talking about things that we may want to think about, and I definitely agree, should we change a shall when it comes to the littoral boundary, public hearing? You guys set the rules here. So this isn't going to be something that's going to kick back to Wetlands again, because they've looked this over for months and months now. They're done with it. These were their suggestions. Take them or leave them. They're, you know, they're done with the discussion. But if there are any changes that we want to see in town, now is the time to talk about them.
So, I mean, I think we need to address, again, to Selectman Perez's point, we need to address the, if we're going to have multiple vessel lifts, right? It was easy when you had one boat lift and one jet ski lift, because the biggest jet ski lift we've all seen is two, so there was our three vessels. If we're going to change that and change the wording, and I guess the intent here was to have two boat lifts, right? Was that the reason Wetlands wanted to make this thing?
Yeah, and keep in mind, no change is made to the maximum of three vessels. That would still hold. So if somebody was applying for a permit and doing it the right way, they would still need to comply with that rule. They would still need to comply with the no more than 50% short coverage rule. And all those issues are presented to Wetlands typically on a survey, so it could be measured out and everything could be looked at before a permit is granted. So it's not like Wetlands is just taking the applicant's word for it or anything else. Now, it's obviously more problematic if someone just drops four or five boats in, multiple boat lifts and everything else. That's a clear enforcement action that we would, that I would pursue. You know, there's always a, like I said, a balancing act in weighing the public good versus the time and everything else that needs to get done, but something like that would get gone after.
Candy, would it make sense to take the language, rather than changing all of this to vessel lifts, which again, the intent was to allow someone to have two boat lifts, to simply change the language to be, you can have two boat lifts, or you can have a boat lift and a jet ski lift? And that way, we eliminate the possibility of having two double jet ski lifts and having the possibility of four?
Yeah, that could work to...
That would just simplify all this, you know, and not allow for this vessel to be so, what's that?
A little less nebulous.
Yes.
Well, because, you know, because if you watch Facebook, there are people trying to rent docks all the time, right? And, I mean, and, I mean, if I wanted to rent my waterfront, right, to pay my taxes, then I could take somebody else, take somebody up on it. But at some point in time, you know, when you, when you look at the lake over time, and you look at carrying capacity, and I've talked about carrying capacity in the, before this, and other lakes are looking at it a lot. The carrying capacity, it's like how many more, I mean, I like my cars, right? I got a lot of them. I go and drive one a day. It's like my boats, we usually just use one a day. But sometimes there's more than one, and then there's boats coming on the lake from the boat launch and marinas and stuff like that. So I think we have to be really careful on how many, because people are, people love Highland Lake, and they should, right? Because it's, it's, we got, we've never been shut down because of the water quality throughout the state. So people try to get on this lake any which way they can. And I think when you're a person that's on the waterfront and you are assessed, your property values have been assessed for the privilege of being on the waterfront, the market value. I think that the carrying capacity has to be looked at, and that's why these littoral boundaries, why I'm talking about it enough. It's, understand, this is not for me. The littoral boundaries are not really going to affect me at all. We have 92 feet of frontage. We got lucky. My father bought in the right location in 1963. We got 92 feet, same as the marina. So I'm not talking about littoral boundaries for me. I'm not talking about, you know, buoys for me or anything for me. But I do see the coves. I watch the coves. You know, when you drive by the coves, and the amount of people that are on top of each other in the coves, and especially the curve on the cove and how they can come out, and how many people are on that 10-foot littoral boundary. And, you know, and I think those people need to be protected as well, you know, in terms of trying to make it, you know, give people relief or get people help. I mean, if you're a new owner, you know that going in. That's something you know going in. But if I'm somebody that's been there for a long time, and all of a sudden, somebody new comes in and wants to now come all the way out and cross the 10-foot right onto my property line with things swinging over, how did that become fair to me, right, to be there for a long time? So I think those kind of things, if you look at them from, you know, everybody's point of view, not just an applicant's point of view, but longtime people that have been there, longtime, you know, everybody that's, you know, gotten along in a cove together, you know, over time. You know, those kind of things I think are important to look at, you know. And it's only because I've, you know, been there my whole life, listening to all the people that came before me that have talked about all these issues over time, you know, with Shirley's comments and everybody's comments. So I think, you know, Wetlands, in terms of their desire to simplify things and give them some help, I think the topics are fine. I don't have any issues with any of the stuff you brought up. I just think it all needs to just be refined more. I like Paul's suggestion to be more definitive with what's, what's there or not, because, because as much as you say that you're going to go do enforcement, right? No, I'm serious. I mean, you could get that big offer tomorrow, and now you're gone again. And that's what we've experienced here. We've had people here, then they go, then they're here, then they go, then they're here, then they go. So your intention may be to do that, but it's not going to happen. And then the other thing that happens too, is what people are paying for jet skis and boats these days? You know, boats, pontoon boats, $60, $80,000. The boats that are sitting in front of the marina right now for wake surfing and stuff, $140,000 at minimum.
$225 for the one that's across the street.
Yeah. So if you, but, but, you know, people go on, or people have their boat like that, and they come on to the lake, and they're expecting, I just paid this, and I want, I want to be here, and you want to be helpful, and you want that, that helping. want to be here and you want to be helpful and you want that, that to be nice, right? But at some point in time, it, it doesn't fit anymore, it can't fit anymore, because it just, because it's about size, you know, it's about size and there's only so many feet. For neighbors, there's only so many, many feet for boats, you know, so how, how do you do it? You know, it's, it's a tough thing today.
Well, to kind of summarize, I think what we've been talking about is changing the language for the lifts. Back to boat and jet ski, so we can, we can define it, you can have two boats or a boat and a jet ski lift. Can't have two jet ski lifts unless they're, unless they hold less than three jet skis. So you could have a double and a single, but you can't have two doubles, right? So put that language in there. Littoral boundary, making the public hearing a requirement if it's inside the 10 feet, as opposed to if it's deemed, so change that language. Some sort of language for relief if a property owner needs it.
Oh, what would the relief be?
Well, there's lots of opportunities for that. I mean, I can't name them, but people who have dock issues or have float issues or have, you know.
Right, but what would they be that's not already accommodated? Would it be somebody could take a dock from 40 feet to 50 feet, 60 feet? Would it be somebody that could have a trampoline that's not 15 feet in width, but 20 feet in length?
It has, like, other municipalities have language in there so that if you have limitations on depth, or you have hazards, or you have obstacles, what have you, that aren't accounted for, that at least, I mean, again, should we have any ordinance in this town that doesn't allow for relief?
Well, in my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Because otherwise, why have the rule?
Because we have zoning rules, but we have relief through ZBA if there's a requirement.
But I guess I'm saying that I'd just like to know what, on the water, so you buy a piece of property, you have a big rock in front of you, does that, is that relief now that you could go to the right of the rock or the left of the rock in front of your neighbors and put your dock out?
Potentially.
Is it because if you only have 15 feet on your water and now you have your dock and then you want to put your boat on the end of it so you don't go off to the 10 feet, now you get to be out 70 feet instead of?
I think it depends on the individual circumstances, Candy, but to, to think that of the, all the docks and moorings that go around the lake, there's not some issues that need to be addressed, I think would be silly.
Well, I don't know, I've seen most of the lake multiple, multiple, multiple times, and I think that, I think there's already leeway in here, I think that people have already, that.
There's leeway for the littoral boundary, there's no leeway for anything else. So people can't get relief if they need it.
Well, there are things that have happened that are not allowed in here that are on the water.
Well, if there's things that are happening that are not allowed in here, that's an enforcement issue, that's not a, that's not the way the ordinance is written issue. I'm just saying, if we're redoing these ordinances now, we should be careful to put in things that need to be taken care of, and this should be one of them. I don't think there's any ordinance or regulation in town that a property owner can't come before either a board or whomever the person may be to request potential relief. In the end, we all have different opinions, that's what we're gonna vote on at the end.
Since you guys are talking about this and I have nothing to do with the lake and you know that, but I got a call today from a resident who's had a problem with jet skis in their cove for a month. So they called today to say that they were on Amazon and they found no wake buoys. So her and the neighbors were wondering if they could just take three or fours, plunk them out in the water on cinder blocks to create a no, and I said, I don't know anything about it, but call the land use department.
They'd have to go to Wetlands.
Because I don't believe you could just be putting.
They'd, they'd have to go to Wetlands to get permitting for it.
That would also be a state, no wake zone would be also, they'd be approved by the state.
And that's an enforcement issue that, of a different type, right? That's getting the police boat out more often. And you know, the police boats kinda out there on a Saturday afternoon to some degree and a little, and, and pretty good about being out there for quiet time. But for the rest of it, it's kind of a free-for-all.
Here, her problem is that there's a couple jet skis that come into this cove and they come within 10 feet of the docks.
If the police were sitting there and ticketing, we wouldn't have a problem.
And so they wanted to put buoys out where these, and I said, yeah, you can't, you definitely can't do that, you need to check.
Look, I mean, I mean, that's why people have the markers out there now, right? To be fair to them, why do markers appear on Highland Lake, all over the lake, is because, because people, the boat drivers are not respecting the distance from shore. So you have 100 feet for boats, 200 feet for jet skis, and we hope that wake surfers stay in the middle, right? Because that seems to be the.
I, I told them to put a camera up because apparently these two come in so close, they actually cover the boat and the dock with water when they turn.
Right, well, and they, and they do. I mean, that's what happens, but you know, to Paul's point, if there were tickets, then maybe it would stop, but people are out there. And that's why a lot of things, that's why we talk about all these things we do, because there are a lot of little issues that may, by themselves are not one thing, by themselves are nothing, but then you get multitudes of them and, you know, it'll be cold soon and then we'll have ice fish on.
Any other comments or questions we got?
Okay, so just to recap, I will provide some new proposed language for you, we're gonna change back to boat and jet ski, so that vessel lift will change, will reinforce the fact that there's still a three watercraft limit. Come up with the proposal of relief language, and there are some towns that have similar things in their regulations already, so we'll try to model something there. Change the may to shall when it comes to littoral boundary encroachment. Change the 50 foot from shorefront to 40 foot for the swim flow, I, I think you're, I think you're dead on with that, that's how I'm reading it too, so it's just a conflict that didn't get picked up. And I think that covers it, did I miss anything?
For the rental situation, I mean, so that's covered in both the zoning regs and the dock and mooring ordinances, right? You can't rent out your dock space, that is illegal from, from two different perspectives.
Correct, that would be considered a marina, and it is hard rule in the zoning regulations that there is only one marina allowed on the lake.
And I think it's addressed in here with the, the number of boats allowed and also how long they can be there, so.
It is, and I, I don't have this part committed to memory, but there's also an issue that if you are going to, you could rent your house that has a dock, and obviously the renter would be allowed to use the dock for their rental period, but if you have a standalone dock and no house that goes with it, you are not allowed to rent that by itself.
And you can't rent out your extra space if you had, if you had one boat and, and you're allowed three, or three vessels, right? You can't rent out the other two spaces.
Correct. All right, so I will see you folks at the next meeting with some new proposals here and some additional information on the fee structures.
Thank you, perfect.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much, lake is our greatest resource, we need to protect it.
Moving on to item number C, discussion on the proposed ordinance changes to notices number 87. At the last meeting, the proposal to amend charter, chapter 87 of notices. Article two, notice of hours of town offices, 87 dash four intent. The Board of Selectmen seeks to ensure that all citizens, taxpayers and visitors of the town of Winchester have equal access to town offices and that any changes or additions to the hours, that all town offices are open, including the town clerk and the registrar of voters, are clearly posted on the town website. The town notice board and all town social media and public notification accounts at least five working days prior to the change or the addition to hours of operation unless greater notice is required under state or federal law. Such notice shall clearly state when the extended or changed hour shall commence and end. 87 dash five, submission of proposed changes to the town manager publication. The town manager shall be responsible for approving and publishing notices of all changes or additions to the hours that any town office is open. Town employees and elected officials shall not transact or process any business outside of the hours that have been approved and published in accordance with this ordinance. 87 dash six, effect on adopted regulations. To ensure equal access to town offices to all citizens, property owners and visitors to the town, and to provide timely public notice of the changes or addition to hours in which the town business can be transacted, ensures that all citizens and taxpayers have the same opportunity to transact town business, to vote and to participate fully as outlined in state statutes and town charter. Anyone have any comments so far? Those are the changes that were requested to the ordinance. Linda, you wanna talk about it last week, you wanna bring something up?
Uh, no, I thought we could discuss this, it was brought to the last meeting by members of the, the Democratic Town Committee, because there wasn't sufficient notice that the town office was open for voters on, for the referendum. So, um, the town, or the, the committee decided to come up with this, uh, chapter 87 notices and maybe have, have the town attorney review it, if anyone had any, any other input.
Other, other Sleckman? So, I said, nobody has anything, I will, Candy, go ahead.
Well, just by process. This was presented by people at Public Comment. So do you all want to take something like this to, to the ordinance stage?
Uh, we're not at, this would still be discussion stage, I would not consider this meeting number one, as we discussed earlier.
But if we send it to the town attorney ahead of it, are we indicating that we are going to do it?
Probably. So we probably want to have all the discussions and set the ordinance as we would see fit before we would send it to the town attorney for approval, which would obviously before, be before step one as well. I do have some concerns with this ordinance, and I understand the, the effort behind it and, and the reason why, and yeah, we did kind of screw up with the posting of the hours on that Saturday. But I also believe that we need people to have more access to town hall and to government and not less, and please don't let the assistant town clerk hurt me here when I say this, but in my opinion, the town hall should probably be open on Saturdays, you know, eight to noon as well, because we are a bedroom community and people do travel an hour plus to work. When I worked in downtown Hartford, every day, it would take me 45 minutes to get to work. Coming home at three o'clock, it could take me between an hour and 15 minutes and an hour and 45 minutes. Tough to get to town hall if they're closing at four o'clock Monday through, Monday through Wednesday, Thursday till six and Friday, open till noon. We should want more people to interact with government. That's neither here nor there, you know, I, I'm not saying that we need to have the town hall open on Saturdays, but I think that, that would make a lot of sense to give more access to government, especially since there's still some things that you can't do online. You know, the five-day notice for, five working day notice for things, we have a special meeting, we only need to post it 24 hours, Board of Selectmen's meetings are posted 24 hours in advance. Generally, if we're posting a special meeting, usually it's in a day or two and not, where there's not a five-day notice that can be given. The section 87.5, that states town employees and elected officials, so not transact, transact or process any business outside the hours that have been approved and published. As mayor, Ice B and Candy knows this because she was mayor for several terms, we speak at a lot of special events throughout the town. Some of these are at last-minute notice. Following this ordinance, in theory, I would no longer be able to present citations or special proclamations to recognize accomplishments outside of posted business hours, this would be event citations or proclamations. Some that I've given so far this year appeared at four Eagle Scout ceremonies to recognize Eagle Scouts. I presented the Elk of the Year proclamation, the Elks Club Youth Weekend in support of youth activities this year was outside of business hours. You know, I had some comments of the Laurel Ball, that's outside of business hours. The Memorial Day Parade, I spoke in the park, outside of business hours. We recognized 102-year-old World War II Winston veteran Ted Marino, or?
Maralda.
He was a founding member that drove the economic recovery for the town after the 55 flood. He owned several businesses in town. This ordinance wouldn't allow myself, other board members or the town manager in those activities. Town manager wouldn't be able to work on a Saturday. He did some work while he was here at the Highland Lake meeting, the annual meeting last Saturday. What about emergencies that occur during now and working hours? A water main break, a sewer main break, this would apply to the fire marshal, fire chief, police chief, emergency management director, public works, what are we gonna do?
Town manager.
Town manager. What are we gonna do if there's a storm that, you know, hits at two o'clock in the morning? We can't go out and plow because we didn't post extended hours? You know, all those things, I don't know if they were thought about ahead of time when, you know, we, we put this ordinance presented to us. You know, town employees, police officers are considered town employees. What do we do there? You can only police Monday through Friday, eight to four, eight to six or eight to 12? So there, there're just a lot of, we need open town hall for, as a warming shelter or a cooling shelter. Emergency operation centers in this office when we have disasters or storms. And then, you know, my family or my girlfriend probably would enjoy this part, but we're not, as elected officials, allowed to do business outside of posted hours. How many times are we at a restaurant, somebody comes over to our table, we're at the gas pump, we're in the grocery store, we get either yelled at or someone asks us to help us with their problem, or they just come and complain on something that they saw on Facebook that may or may not be true? You know, this theory, in theory, this ordinance change wouldn't allow us, we would have say, I'm sorry, I, I can't conduct town business with you right now. At the end of the day, we're governments 24/7 and we should have more access to the public and they should have more access to us, and those are my thoughts. But Marino? So before we tear into this for hours and hours and hours, if the intent is to ensure that the town clerk's office and the registrar or voter's office, any changes to that are published five days in advance, we could probably all support that one pretty easily. It's all the other restrictive language that you point out that was added to this, for what reason, I do not know. But it seems to me this came because of the, the referendum and the time that was spent on the referendum and the Saturday opening that wasn't as published, or well as published as it should have been, and that may be all we need to fix here as opposed to everything else that's here. I think that's.
And I'm wondering, since we're opening up the door here for looking at changing ordinances, maybe we oughta look at the whole entire thing, because I'm sure there's some stuff in there that needs to be cleaned up.
You mean, this particular ordinance or all?
No, all ordinances. Since we're opening the door, then we're gonna have to vote on this.
When we went to Ecode, what, two years ago, three years ago, they did review, I believe, all of the ordinances and all the commissions reviewed their ordinances, and did make some repairs and adjustments at that time. Candy, what do you remember about that, any?
I remember lots of things.
About that particular?
Yeah, I do, because I, I led that with Candace and Linda, we, we, so we did the, we did the Ecode, so all the, all the ordinances that you see online now used to be in, in a PDF kind of form that was online, all with the index, and then in a book in the town clerk's office. So one of the things we did was we put it out on Ecode, which now everybody can go look at, but we did look, the Ecode people looked through all the ordinances, department heads like Todd said, looked through all the ordinances to update what we could at the time. There were some that did not get up. There were some that did not get updated at the time and, and should have, uh, well, should have come afterwards, uh, should have been done, uh, since then and none of the ordinances have really... There are some in there that need to be done, some need to still come out, some are, are still sitting there with inconsistencies and so yes, you, you could do that. I would also say the charter as well. One of the things I know that Candace and I would talk about, um, you know, before this last term ended was what could E-code rewrite our charter? Or is there a service out there, an consultant that could take our charter, not to change the concepts in it or the intent in it, but the language in it and the organization of it? Uh, because the charter is all over and, but the charter has to be approved by the public. So, any charter, any things always brings up, some things are, everybody wants and some things people don't. Uh, so that's a whole other big nut to crack. So, for this, as you were all talking, um, what if we just took, cause I believe that the intent of this came from that day, right? That infamous day that is not going away anytime soon right now, because this is here. Um, what if you just went into the town meeting ordinance, because there's a meeting for town ordinance, right? Uh, so the town meeting ordinance for the annual budget says you do this at Gilbert, you do that at Gilbert, or wherever you meet, and you do this, you do that, and you adjourn to referendum. What if at the bottom of that, you just put a, a simple thing that all voting hours need to be posted, whether it's twenty-four or thirty-six hours in advance on the town's website and social media sites?
How about if we take it one step further, Candy? What if we say, we hand it off to referendum that the, sorry, but the town clerk's office will be open from eight to noon on the subsequent Saturdays between the town meeting and the referendum? Then there's no question, it happens every year, and we give better access to people so they can vote.
Well, then I think extending that thinking out, it wouldn't just apply to the annual meeting, there may be other referendums for things. Like if you wanted to fix the school roof, for instance, and you wanted to hold a referendum for that, would you extend and open the hours? So, basically you, you're, what you're saying is pretty much following what the state has done in terms of, uh, voting outside the actual November fourth day and expanded voting hours. So, would you, so, so that could happen?
So, how many, uh, weekends between the town meeting and the referendum is it usually? Do you know? Is it two?
It's usually two.
Two. So, to your thinking, which I like, referendums, the two previous Saturdays or prior Saturdays to any referendum, town clerk's office will be open from eight to twelve to allow for more flexibility in voting.
So, are you talking about early voting? During voting? Are you talking about early voting?
Well, if you go to the town's clerk's office, they were able to bring in, um...
Absentee.
Absentee ballots that day.
Right.
Right? I'm just trying to give, because I'm just trying to, without, without overcomplicating it, because I like to keep it simple.
Well, yeah.
Without overcomplicating it, if we decided to say, okay, prior to any referendum, town clerk's office will be able to accept and distribute absentee ballots for the two weeks prior to, in any referendum, then it's in the ordinance, we don't have to worry about publishing it five days in advance and all that stuff. We can just make it part of the, the voting routine?
You'd have to clear that with Glenn and his office because, um, he's an elected official and we have no control over his hours.
Well, I'm not saying, I haven't worked out all the details yet, Troy, but just kind of spitballing here.
Well, I mean, that speaks, I would speak into a charter change on the town clerk's position, just like Canaan is doing right now. I mean, Canaan in Hartford and Washington and all of them, just change the town clerk to a, under the town manager instead of under a political party.
You know how hard that is to get done? That's like a constitutional amendment around there.
Well, I mean, you changing the voting thing, I believe would also be a charter constitutional amendment thing. I don't think that in terms of the voting times, because it, it says it adjourns to referendum on a date that the town meeting picks.
So, any adjustment to that requires a charter change as opposed to the ordinance?
I would guess yes.
So, your suggestion Candy is to change the town clerk's position from an elected position to an appointed position?
Yeah, we went through that three years ago, so, so until you, one of you guys brings it up, then I can't, I can't make it pass. Yeah, because, because there was too much opposition from some people that there was no need to bring it forward and make it a big disturbance in the town. So, anyway, until everybody agrees, that would be a good thing, because then it wouldn't be political anymore and what happened wouldn't be political and all that. But my suggestion is just put it in the town meeting ordinance that there being notice, which is what this intent, this, and to make it simple, is that there being notice of, of, of these meetings. Uh, I mean, if the, if you're going to open up an office to do something, because to be fair, you know, Sheila said that she would open up on a Saturday, get somebody a birth certificate or a death certificate, right? You know, we don't want to stop that.
Which this does.
Yeah, and we don't want, we, you know, and then, uh, and see Todd's made a whole list of, of all the things that somebody might want to do outside of the hours and stuff. Uh, whereas a lot of this is came from the, you know, just post the hours. I mean, how hard is it? You know, you got a website, you got social media, just post it, you know, from the official place.
Wouldn't it be nice, and I realize a charter change is so difficult, but wouldn't it be nice to just have it automatic that prior to any referendum, that office could be open and it never has to be thought about again? You don't have to get it posted, you don't have to do all that stuff.
Absentee, for, you know, that, well, you're talking about like, you know, more, and that's fine with me. I mean, our side usually is okay with more.
I would think.
Yeah, I mean, usually more would be good, but there has to be, but people push back now that the tour, before election, right? There's two weeks, is it two weeks? Two weeks of, of expanded voting or?
Fourteen days, I think.
We also have a unique situation.
So, some people think that's, some people think that's too long, right? So, some people think that's too long, but there hasn't been a judge. So, when you start to talk about if we're going to open up on a Saturday for absentee ballots, or you're going to open it up on a Saturday for all voting, so now you, you're talking about absentees, or you're talking about all voting?
Well, we can, we can come to terms with those details, but again, thinking about...
Well, I think...
Right, right. I mean, we have a unique town from the perspective that we have a lot of weekend, our population goes up a lot on the weekends, right? Because of the lake. And if, and if, and if, like, my next-door neighbor wasn't here this weekend, but they'll be here next weekend. So, to give them multiple weekends to potentially vote in a referendum, I think is fair. And again, we, we have some uniqueness in this town that we should adapt to.
Right, but are you talking about absentee ballot voting, or are you talking about regular voting? Cause they're two different animals, right?
I guess I'd have to think about that one.
Yes. Cause regular voting would be now we're doing early voting for, for referendums and does that have to go into the charter and is that something that the state has to approve? Whereas if you're just talking about when the town clerk's office is open for absentee ballots, I think that's just a managerial town ordinance kind of thing that goes along with absentee ballots already.
Well, I think these are all the things that we can put into further discussion on this to try to get to an agreement on what makes the most sense in our town, given the uniqueness of our population.
I'd also say the town is also unique in other ways too, not just because weekenders, because, you know, a lot of people that have things in trusts or LLCs, et cetera, are not able to vote. Um, only people whose names are on properties can vote. So, that has reduced the amount of people in weekends through, and we can't forget about Winchester Center, because there's a lot of weekend up there too. This isn't, we, we forget there's more parts to town than our little dot up there, you know, our four hundred and forty-four acres, there tends to be a whole lot more over this way. And we forget about that in, in many ways, but there are people like Bill. Uh, maybe he has to work and he's working all these shifts, second shift, and he can't get here or has to take care of kids. So, when you talk about who needs to vote and who needs to get there, everybody needs to get there, not just one circumspect of it. And the town meeting does allow and has allowed in the past for the date to be set and it was specifically set on Saturdays a lot of times, so all those people that are only here on weekends could vote. But it wasn't chosen this time, you know, though there was a date to do it on.
Yeah, I wasn't inferring that only the lake was what we had to accommodate. We have to accommodate everybody and I think having something set prior to referendums would create fairness that we're trying to accomplish, without restricting the town employees from working a minute of overtime.
Right. I think that's all people want is the public notice.
So, should we, um, create a subcommittee to discuss the different aspects? Should it be absentee? Should it be, um, a charter change? Should it be an ordinance change? Do you want to, do you want to work on that?
Me?
In, in a bipartisan fashion, Candy? You and I can work on that?
Oh, are you volunteering with Candy to form a subcommittee?
I am.
Yes.
I am.
Well...
Just say yes.
Just say yes.
Just say yes.
There's no pressure.
I didn't even, I didn't write this, I didn't bring this.
But you have a lot of good ideas and I think we should work on them.
As a matter of fact, I said I wasn't bringing it.
Just for now.
I, I have experience is what I have. I just have experience over all these people that have taught me so many things. It's like my, my young, young friend that tells me that, oh, the, where he learned how to take apart wine cellars, et cetera, gathered from the encyclopedia of older men that he's learned from. I too have an encyclopedia from older men and women I've, I've worked with, right? So, that's all I got.
At the end of the day, I think we're all in favor of posting correctly hours of town hall. And I think that's what we should be striving for and not necessarily changing, um, this ordinance, but like you said, the town meeting ordinance probably makes the most sense.
Probably just...
Nothing else.
Troy, you're smiling.
So, I'll meet with, I'll meet with Paul and we'll, we'll talk about what that means to have an ordinance change versus a charter change.
I was just going to send you both home to do homework and bring it back to us.
Isn't that what I always do?
Well, there was no togetherness there, Troy. Reaching out.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Oh, we don't want to get out too early without Paul here.
Well, I told him we would.
Get out early?
Get out early.
Cause he might be watching. If you're there, Paul, I hope you're enjoying the music that you're hearing.
Oh, he's not watching, he's on vacation.
He said he would probably watch it much, much later tonight.
He said he would watch it later after the kids went to bed.
People are reporting music still, so, say it.
Are we still recording?
Somebody did, yeah.
So, uh, moving on to item, discussion regarding changes to historic commission ordinance number fifty. Linda brought this up last week that, uh, or not last week, last meeting, that we had some, um, concern with membership of the historic commission, um, dating back to our favorite word, elector. Um, after much research, we actually did find in E-code that we do have a delect, a definition of elector. Uh, section seventeen oh eight, definition of voters and electors as used in this charter, an elector means any person who is an elector of the town or a property owner over the age of eighteen who jointly or severely is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list or who would be so liable if not entitled to a statutory exemption. That right there, I believe certifies or clarifies that the current members were both property owners in town, but not voters. Um, so they would be eligible to serve on the historic commission.
Was it the historic or the cultural commission that we allowed non-electors on it?
I think the discussion was around the historical commission.
No, but we allowed for non-electors to be on one...
I had thought that it was the historic commission, but we could not actually find that in writing anywhere.
Was it the cultural then?
Cultural or...
I think it was maybe Bill.
See, the proposed ordinance change said it was attached, which, and this was the motion that was used in twenty-four to make this change for the historical?
Maybe that's why, because if it was the cultural commission and we were just searching for the historic commission, uh, that could have been why it was not, uh, found. But with the definition of elector, um, I believe it takes care of the issue, we don't need to make any changes.
Right, and we were definitely, when we expanded this, we were trying to allow for more people to join historical commission. That's what this was all about.
Yep.
So, I have a question about the historic commission while we're here. Um, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and I know that we were going to do things and the two hundred and fiftieth started this past spring with Paul and Beer's ride and stuff. So, I just wondered like, uh, I guess Bill, you're the laser?
I am.
Can you tell me what, what's happening with the two fifty? Just quick, not real long.
Well, I know that Hamish has actually reached out to other towns to see what they're doing, but he definitely, we want to do something here special for that, that day, whether it's decorating a building or something, you know, very nostalgic and, uh, so that's pretty much...
We do have the proclamation that's supposed to be posted somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's still...
So, nothing yet?
Nothing really yet. Yeah, just stuff like that.
I just, I, I was just wondering, because I, uh, when, was reading through all this stuff, trying to figure out what we were doing with this ordinance, because I couldn't figure out, like, reading it where we're going and then I just remembered the two hundred and fiftieth and I'm just as curious as to if something had happened, was going to happen, because some, some things, like, let's call this done, it's done by and stuff that.
Hamish, Hamish, he's the one that was in charge of it all first, so hopefully he'll be...
Yeah, he was spearheading it.
Yeah. So, is he off or on now?
He is on, he resigned, it is.
He's recently, he's, he's a elector.
When we cleared up his...
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to item, oh my God, I lost my paper.
E.
E. Refunds is recommended by the collector of revenue. We have, uh, motor vehicle refunds of seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents and real estate values of two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents for a total of one thousand nine dollars and ninety-three cents in refunds.
I move this to board of selectmen authorize refunds recommended by the collector of revenue in the amount of one thousand nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second, any other discussion?
Who does that go to? Troy or?
It's Troy. It don't matter. You don't get money for us, it doesn't matter.
All in favor? Unanimous? Blackman's comments and report.
Uh, nope.
Nope, citizen's comments.
Section eleven.
It's because I lost my paper, I told you. Anyone wish to speak?
Yeah, okay. So, um, I heard Selectman Perez say that there was a letter from Ellie Gunn, who sits with me on ZBA, wondering why there was an action brought against John Pollock without it ever having been discussed with him ahead of time. Um, I would like to reinforce that question. Now, clearly he has chosen to resign, um, but should he choose to sit on the ZBA again and make an application? I think that any allegations that are brought against him need to have evidence to support the allegations. Um, I haven't seen Selectman Hester or Selectman Marino at any of the meetings at ZBA and I've been there for a year. Uh, maybe you're watching on YouTube, but the chair was sitting here and said he was only told three hours before the meeting that this action was going to be taken. So, I just find it kind of shocking. I mean, Selectman Marino was on the ZBA with him for five years or something and didn't bring an action then. So, I just want to say, as somebody who sat on the board with him and, uh, believes that he did come in with knowledge of the, of the applications, did think about the applications before him in a thoughtful way, that he should be given a chance to come back should he decide he wants to. Um, and I don't know what the norm is, but if an action like that is taken, I feel like the chair needs to know, the person needs to know, there, there should be a discussion just like in the name of fairness. So, that's all I have to say.
So, while we don't typically comment on public comments, I'll address this one for you. So, as the person who's done so much research in the last several weeks in favor of your candidacy, first and foremost, the chair has no right, has no... favor of your candidacy, first and foremost, the chair has no right, has no power, whatever, to remove or, or discipline any of its members. That comes from the appointing authority, which is sitting behind these up, up here. We do the appointing. In the event that there is an issue, Mr. Pollock was invited to come to a hearing where he could have defended himself, and he could have heard what the challenges were, or what the concerns were. And when I served with him for five years, I was in a board of selectmen and had no way to remove him or to make any changes. So, that's why, for the five years that you mentioned, I had no ability to do that.
Then why didn't you do it when you started? Why'd you wait two years?
Because I would hope, you know what, I'm not gonna litigate his hearing in front of you.
Okay, well, you're the one who decided to have a conversation.
All right, let's bring it back to you there.
So, as Candy has often done, if you're gonna call people out directly, we don't typically respond, but when you come in here, and I know it's, you know, it's already election season. You know, we get letters every single meeting in this packet, and the first time in two years one's been read or discussed is tonight. Isn't that interesting? So, anyway, it's election season, we're, it's already happening, so we're gonna enjoy this for the next several months.
And just so you know, my name is not on there.
I'm not accusing you of it, Candy, but it's.
I'm just telling you, my name is not.
We've never, we've never read a letter into record in the two years I've been sitting here. No, we have not. We have, we get them all the time, and they go through the packet, nobody typically addresses it. So, it's just a change tonight that I wasn't expecting, that's all.
No, Paul, if you want to go back, there has been things that have come into the record.
Very few.
And, well, I think maybe I'll do some research tonight.
Okay.
We actually, I did.
Just for fun.
Into record a couple of meetings ago.
It's just, it's just interesting. And it's funny, in Ellie Gunn's letter, she goes, quote, "He does have a bias against the lake." That's in her letter.
All right, so, I, I guess, I wasn't gonna say anything, but there's an applicant out there now, and this is third hand, like, thinks that now he's gone, the application's gonna get approved. I think that's one of the dangers of all this, when, when you bring things to the board of selectmen, and you start to remove commission members.
You should watch the recording from the last meeting.
I'm not, I'm talking generally overall, and we've had this discussion offline.
And I had the same issues with Mr. Pollock when I was on the board.
Right, that, that's, that's fine, but I guess the, the thing they're talking about is just, instead of having it at the board of selectmen for the first time, making it outlawed, and then inviting to him a hearing, I guess the question was, why did you not tell him that you were gonna talk about him before you talked about him?
Well, I, I, I'm not gonna go.
So, in hindsight, because you might be here next time. You might be here after November, right, and you will be here for the next seven meetings. So, maybe when you do something, or if this happens again, you'll be the wise one, right, to say, maybe we should do this ahead of time and tell the person, so that we can do it in a, in a manner that, for somebody that's sat for 13 years, right?
We invited him to come speak on his behalf, that's what the hearing would have been for.
Yeah, but that was after the hearing, but the meeting before that.
All right, we're kind of getting off track since we are in citizen comments.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Yeah.
Mr. Herman?
Well, I don't have any comment relating to this. I just have a, you know, an off-the-cuff idea that's been on my mind for a decade, and I just thought I might mention it, which is that I, you know, I learned to fly an airplane a couple of decades ago, right? I don't do it anymore, it's been 10 years since I've done it. But, you know, one thing I, it came to my attention was that after closing Johnny Cake Airport, the FAA identified Litchfield County as being, having inadequately served by regional airports, by regional airport, and they were willing to spend 90%, 97% of the cost to procure it and build a regional airport. So, it occurs to me that it wouldn't do, if there were land in Winchester, it may be Winchester North of Torrington, airplane authority, or airport authority, or something like that. If land could be identified and the FAA, well, I hope there's still enough people working at the FAA to, to do something, but, you know, if, if they would pay 97%, you know, a regional airport here might not do the economy of our little region any harm. So, it's a thought maybe worth looking into, you know. I, I participate in looking into it if it was, if there was interest. That's my thought.
Need somewhere flat.
What's that?
Need somewhere flat.
Get landed on a solar farm on top of Pratt.
Well, we used to have the pontoon plane up at the lake land on the lake.
Yeah.
That's just actually, that is an actual registered center right up the street.
You're talking about a larger one, right?
I'm talking about something, you know.
Johnny Cake size?
Well, like a Johnny Cake would have been not, you know, that, that's got room, or, you know, the airport in Plainville, something, you know, something that might catch on, but having access to the area, you know, might enhance.
What was the economies of Johnny Cake, though?
What's that?
What was the economies of Johnny Cake, because it closed?
Johnny Cake was small, but the FAA wanted to make it, you know, a little, little stronger, but the gentleman who owned it really, you know, didn't, didn't want to do anything, wanted to close it down. So, that's what happened to Johnny Cake. But the, the federal government was ready to come in there and spend 97% to, to make it something. It could be something like Robertson Airport, you know, but a, a regional airport, you know, might bring some business in, some identity in.
I'd like the train.
What?
I would like the train.
The train from up in Waterbury, my God, you know, why not? You know?
Except we ripped all the tracks out.
Yeah, we did.
Well, the tracks are there, but the, the line is there, but the tracks are in disrepair, right? It's not the case?
No, there's, there's piles of tracks that.
Torrington's one of that old new rail station.
Yeah. It goes to Torrington, but it doesn't go any farther.
It stops behind K-Mark. They tore all the rails out of K-Mark.
Church Street.
Is there any interest in talking about a regional airport, maybe with surrounding towns, you know? I would certainly participate.
Todd, you can bring it up with a cog.
Absolutely. I don't know, I don't know if we're on friendly terms with some of the other cog towns, right now.
Somebody's interested, you know.
But it makes sense to explore.
Herman just got all those flats.
Well, maybe you should look at the topo maps.
That's, that would be an approach. If, if there's interest in doing it, you know, we look at the, we'll see what could be leveled off here somewhere.
Seaport Airport.
There's probably, anything that brings people and/or revenue to the town, there's always interest.
Okay, guys, that's.
Anyone else wish to speak? Selectman's comments and reports.
I got something, I, I don't know if I missed this, or if anybody else said this, but I think Mr. Welcome needs to be congratulated for his years of service with the parking rec department. Somebody told me he's been doing this for 60 years, is that correct?
I don't think so.
I mean, that, I mean, that's a great accomplishment, and that's a lot of work for.
So, parking wrecks have, have got a little memorial plaque for him, and gave him a letter, and had a little, Jim, Jim requested that he didn't want, they wanted to call him in, do this, and Jim's like, no, 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 no. Jim's one of those guys that he's just like.
Is he finally retired?
I did it, I'm done. You're welcome.
He did retire, he's done.
Yeah, he's, I think he's got, if he's not done, he's got a couple more weeks, because there was a delay on, on odd boarding with the new applicant, so he volunteered to stick around a few more weeks.
Yeah, because they saw him.
Took time to hold hands with this guy, to, to, because again, like Jim said, there's certain pipes you gotta kick, there's certain wall plates you gotta whack with a hammer, and to get the fountain going, and he, he left up two notebooks like that.
I'd just like to recognize him, because I think that's a great accomplishment for somebody that put that much time and service for our town.
Absolutely. So, and I did receive an email from, from a neighbor up the road that wanted to thank Public Works and Phil's Crew and all that for mowing and taking care of new field roads, because I believe they missed the last ball. So, everything was bad, and they came up, did a nice job, trimmed everything back, mowed the sides of the roads, cleaned the roads up.
It's paved?
No.
Oh.
Clean, cleaned the sides of the road, and they, they were all chomping at the bit, so did take the time to send me out a letter wanting to thank.
To start.
Thank them. So, any other comments?
Delighted to read in Chief Ciuti's letter that the architects are beginning their feasibility study on the Bank of America building as a police station. And when you look at the conditions based on the last disaster that happened downstairs, it's none too soon. So, I'm excited to see how that, how that study comes back. Anyone else?
Take motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Good night, see you in August.